I'd like to call this meeting ordered and we can please stand and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everyone for coming tonight. Just give her one moment. Mrs. Lee, nobody here to speak, okay? We do not have any written communication or anyone here wishing to speak. But we do have some committee reports from our board members. Mr. Vivalo, you could report that from the NISBA proposed resolution.
Yeah, so I was the voting delegate against the NISBA resolution. And so, meeting started at four. There was about three hundred and some numbers. The quorum is two hundred. There was fifty-six resolutions. And then, we were on late business, which would have been other business. And at eleven fifty, which was seven hours and fifty minutes later, the last resolution, number fifty-six, happened. And we ran into other business, which was us. And we were informed by the parliamentarian that we'd lost the quorum. So the meeting was basically immediately ended. So the pot, one of the positives was, is we, even though it was a late resolution, we got it on the list of resolutions, the last one that was sent out. So it's out there. I actually spoke to our government affairs representative at NISBA and just to ask him about how, you know, we moved things forward with this. And he said to me, he said, "Well, look, if we can get someone to sponsor it, or a lawmaker to bring it up," he says, "we'll support it." So he had said that we should look to do that. He also talked about EBSCO.
Oh, ESO.
ESO. And then...
NISCUS.
NISCUS, because maybe to look at them, you know, potentially...
Just get all the groups advocating?
Yeah, and that's basically it. I also asked him when our, you know, for the next business meeting, when is the new, you know, when do we start submitting resolutions? And he said about three months or so ahead of time. And I think he said somewhere between April and July or something like that is when it starts.
July, I believe it's.
Yeah, so I mean, I guess, and I think what ends up happening, because I think we'll want to resubmit this, you know, as long as the board is okay with it, that we'll resubmit it and do it the first possible. Because I guess, the way that they do things is, they do it by order received as to where they position you and what I guess I found out. And there's two things, either NISBA will recommend something or they'll not recommend it. And then they'll potentially take a stance on it. And so, then, you know, then it's sort of order. So you probably want to be in the beginning because members get a little tired toward the end. Yeah, and they just, yeah, they kind of cut discussion and they, you know, whatever.
I'm so sorry I missed it.
So anyway, so it was a very, it was very interesting. I guess you can't see how the sausage is made. It was a record number of resolutions.
Wow.
Some districts like to do a lot of resolutions.
I noticed that.
So...
So Williamsville hopped on with us, right?
Yeah, Williamsville hopped on.
And then did Sweetville ever respond?
I did speak to one of their board members. He was fully on. I think he was trying to explain it to some of the other board members, so... But I think, you know, I mean, you know, my thing to them is going to be, we, you know, and this is what Jay Romna, the parliamentarian, told me, you know, just about why the late resolution was, you know, because we had just found some information out. So I think, you know, I think, you know, going forward, we'll be able to present this kindly and, you know, I think we'll get people to understand it, so...
Well, there's, so I have a legislative team meeting on Thursday. Is this something that I should be doing?
I think so, absolutely.
I wouldn't even just bring up the resolution with them.
Sure, I will do that.
And I could send it to you.
Yeah, could you do that and then I'll just, I'll explain kind of what's going to be brought up.
And then it could be on the team's radar for anyone who goes to Albany in February, whatever that is.
Well, that's, yeah, that's certainly on the...
Yeah, the advocacy day.
Right, because NISBA, that wasn't our only opportunity to advocate for this.
Yeah, no, exactly. I think it was more to get it out there to these other, you know...
Right, to the other board.
Board that, you know, aren't really aware of what's going on.
All right, we'll plan on doing that, yeah.
Well, ultimately, the goal is to get a politician to introduce an amendment to the bill so it gets passed through the state budget process.
The NISBA part was just, they would support that.
Yeah, they had something to point to, to say, "We have a reputable statewide organization that's in support of us."
Yeah, so...
Okay.
All right.
Well, you did your job last time.
Yes, unless you want to go to my meeting on Thursday, because...
Wow, paint the facts, Tom.
I'm sure you'll enjoy it, too. But anyway, so that's, that's my report.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. That was a little more than we were anticipating for that. But we appreciate your diligence in sitting through that meeting. Anybody else have a board report, committee report? No, okay. Well, with that, we'll move on to Superintendent Penola. I'll turn it over to you.
Well, thank you. So as you are aware, this is the School Board Recognition Week. And it's an opportunity for me to say thank you to all of you for what you do in representing our district and leading our district and volunteering your time, Dominic, above and beyond, in some cases.
You should too.
But I think that's a, I think it's a great example of how the amount of time that goes into being a board member, I don't think everybody realizes that. You know, as an elected voluntary position, you're here for the right reasons. Because you care about the community, you care about the kids, you care about our schools. So I thank you for that. You may have seen already, if not, we have several things in your honor that are taking place this week. We have some signage on our Main Street sign in front of the high school. We have a news feature on our website. We also have an editorial that should be published in tomorrow's edition of The Amherst B as well as social media posts. And in front of you, you also have just a little token of my appreciation to help decorate your house for the upcoming fall season, for current fall season. So it's up to you. You can open them, you can wait.
Well, we have to open them, I think.
Oh, my gosh. Oh, my gosh.
It's a pumpkin with my name on it. You're very nice, yeah, right there.
Yes, yes. I also was up till eleven thirty.
Thank you. That's really special. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Enjoy. Hopefully it has a nice place on a mantel or somewhere in your home.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Not necessary, but certainly appreciated.
Yeah, should we swap them out?
Yes.
Thank you, Tommy.
You're welcome. I also have some exciting news from the curriculum office to share with you tonight as well. I'm pleased to welcome Dr. Shannon Mann with part two of her curriculum update, this time focusing on secondary curriculum.
Yes, and I'll, Dominic, I'll be less than seven hours. Keep it moving, thank you for doing all that work. Right, so last time we were together, I gave you an update around the elementary and tonight we'll bookend it with the secondary curriculum update. So thank you for giving me this opportunity. Once again, all the work that we're doing emanates out of our strategic plans, specifically out of the area of teaching and learning, although they all intersect. And in our initiative for that is that my office is to develop and plan, develop a plan to review and analyze our curriculum and our programs with curriculum committees, where last time I talked to you about how important it is to have our teacher leaders, and those are the people doing the work on these committees. So tonight, I'll briefly show you that development, curriculum development process again. And then I'll take you through a review of what English, math, and science at the secondary level have been working on. So I shared with you last time, and I just want to ground the work always because the committee work is always going to be grounded in the standards. And that's, you know, where we're trying to do the good work that we do. We develop our curriculum from that, which then, you know, is our content, our skills, our strategies that we need to be teaching students, as well as the instruction, what does that look like? And then our assessment, how is it working for our student learners? And this process continues repeatedly throughout the year. So I'll start giving you a description around the secondary ELA committee. First time in a long time, we actually have Regents exams because we haven't had those for a few years. Scores that we were able to use are scores that we have the majority of our students taking, taking these assessments. So obviously, this is one data point in time. And so, I wanted to share with you our proficiency levels, which we would normally have done prior to the pandemic. So we're looking at levels three, four, and five. We have ninety-four percent proficiency for our students in the eleventh grade English Language Arts Regents exam, which is, we think, is high. We're always looking, you know, it's strong. We're looking for ways to improve. Obviously, we want to move, you know, threes to fours, fours to fives, ones to twos, and just continue to move students' proficiency levels up. And, but this is one data point and it also is at this level. So then I go back to Mrs. Ernst's question about like, what, you know, we look at testing and standards, what does that look like? So what happens is, we also look beyond the test at what's going on with students. And I'll talk with you briefly about this and get you to some of the discrete work. After the pandemic, the English department came to me and they said, "One of the things they're noticing is lack of discussion in classrooms, lack of high levels of engagement. They felt like they were losing that." And if you think about it, you put a mask on your face, you stop talking for a little bit, there's that whole lack of interaction going on. They're very concerned about that because we know interaction, that engagement, is super important because one, it's the biggest predictor of student learning outcomes is engagement predicts learning outcomes. It reduces absenteeism if I'm engaged in what I'm doing. And so having their involvement in voice was really important, even though, as I said, some of their assessment proficiency levels were high. And so what they wanted to work on was this overarching question. Using student voice and inquiry, how can we create classroom cultures that engage students in more meaningful learning? And so I did skip, I apologize. The picture in the center is Dr. James Sercombe, and he is at the English Department at Buffalo State College. And he has been working with them on taking their units and seeing where they can infuse more opportunities for student voice and engagement within their lessons. So I showed you that curriculum process in the beginning. It's taking that instructional piece and saying, "How do we open this up? Because we need to get kids back talking again." Talk mediates learning. Writing mediates learning. So we know we need that back in there. And besides that, they actually will enjoy learning. And if they enjoy learning, things get much better for everybody you want to attend. And you, you're, like I said earlier, it's predictive of your learning outcomes. They have some very initial comments they wanted me to share with you. I asked them, "What would you like me to share?" And they said, "They just started their first unit and going into the second with some of these revisions this year. And they're noticing increase in student participation and discussion and by allowing students to insert some of their own questions and wonderings into different themes that they're studying in English." And they're also noticing a connection between reading and writing and then what's going on in the world. And then that also shows high levels of comprehension going on in those spaces. So those are just some of these, these are very initial. As I said, this work was done this summer. So they're just starting with the revisions on their first unit right now to try to infuse more student voice and engagement. So that's a big thrust for the, it's actually for the whole English department, set up by the representatives on the committee. Middle school ELA proficiency levels. You'll see, we're looking at the threes and fours for this at grade levels six, seven, and eight. So we are sixty-nine, sixty-seven, and sixty-eight percent proficiency levels. And that gives us a global view, strong. We can always improve, I think, with any of these, we can always improve. So then what happens, this gives us this view, but what do I do now as a teacher? So I showed you the three circles, like, how do I get to that instructional piece? Because this doesn't give me enough. So I'm just going to share with you what happens next in these meetings in the summer. They'll look at these proficiency scores and then it's like, okay, so now what's the specifics? What are the specific areas we need to work on? So what they do then is we look at, we actually look at some reports from the data warehouse, which show us how students do per standards that were assessed on that test and question type. So the good news, I was really thrilled with this, the writing questions were not a problem on any grade level. So these were multiple choice questions that these standards came up on, which sometimes the writing is a more labor intensive and that's where you see some issues. But there were none on constructed responses or the extended responses. At the sixth grade level, these reports, what we look at is BOCSs. We take Buffalo Public Schools out of that. We don't include them in that equation. So we look at the regions in the BOCSs area. And the score starts out at a zero and goes up. So we're even with BOCSs and we go up scoring above or scoring below. Sixth grade had everything above in English Language Arts. So that's not good enough, though, because you can be close on a standard and have more work to do. So that's what they did. For this one, I think it was zero percent. So they were scoring even with the region there. So they said, "Well, there could be work there." So they are taking this standard and they're looking at their units and seeing, was it the way the question was asked? Was it, because sometimes that happens too? Or was it that we need to do something different with our instruction? So what the teachers will do from here is they'll take that standard, look at their instruction, and determine if it's something that needs to be worked on within their curriculum and instructional practice. And the same thing for the first one, that was one percent off. So it was just plus one. So they'll look at like the zeros, plus ones, plus twos, even if there isn't a below proficiency level on that because it's just always an area that maybe could use more instructional, you know, focus. So that's where they look at their units and they do revisions if deemed necessary. So sixth grade scored above BOCSs on all the standards that were assessed that year. And I'm not going to go through these line by line. I'm trying to illustrate with you where that curriculum process comes in and the work that the teachers are doing before the kids come into the school year and through the first couple of superintendent conference days. Grade seven had a minus, you know, one percent below, two percent below, and five on these particular standards. So what they do there is then they really look and say, "Are we teaching this standard enough? Is it repeated enough? Is it done for a long enough time? Are the resources strong enough?" And then they'll revise their teaching around these particular standards. And the same thing then happens with in the eighth. We were just one percent below on the two standards, which, this is very, this is very strong. So this is, I'm picking right now, right? But I think in the Amherst, we try to do and be the best that we can be. And so we always look to see, how can we get better? And how can we maintain what we're doing and then continue to improve? So this is the committee work that was done in the middle school as well as in the high school this year. So I just shared with you already, that's what we're reviewing again. So that was just illustrative. I won't take you through standards again, but I just wanted to show you what's happening. That work on standards and that report is looked at in every curriculum committee as one of the several reports we do. So for high school math, you can see that Algebra I, Algebra II, and Geometry, we have some strong proficiency levels there. Obviously, there's always room for improvement as well. We'd like to see Algebra II and Geometry continue to be higher than what it currently is, but still strong. And the goals that the math, secondary math we're working on was, so you have your New York State test, but that's like at the end of the year. So how do we know along the way how we're doing? So what they have been working on last summer, last year, and into this year is they are developing common formative assessments across the year. So all the algebra teachers get together and have a common assessment that they give. And then they meet afterwards and they debrief. How do the students do meeting those standards? What do we need to reteach? What do we need to teach differently? What are we very strong at? And so they're doing that continuously. Last year, going into this year, and that work, you know, they continue to build it. So they have more and more formative assessments. And they use that data to derive their instructional decisions. And they use eDoctrine as a resource to do that. And I already shared with you, they review the New York State data and they make curricular adjustments based on gaps that they see. They have been working for three years. This relates back to English in integrating active participation strategies in their lessons. So how do we get kids more actively engaged in the concepts that they're learning? And they have had a couple of years of professional development and strategies that they can apply immediately. And they, we want to continue to work on that because that's something that, you know, that will increase student learning and we know that if we hit the mark. Algebra is in the middle of some standards changes. And so they are continuing their alignment, that's specific by course. And they are creating a cumulative midterm that they're going to give the Regents week of January, and then they'll get together and look at those results again and see how, that will give them some, like, some sustained assessments to look back as to how they're doing the standards. That's their work right now. So middle school proficiency levels in math, and once again, we're looking at three and four. We, threes and fours. We have seventy percent, eighty-four percent. Don't worry about eighth grade going down to sixty-three. Remember, eighth grade is where we start Algebra I in the middle school. So I'll just flip ahead, where we had forty-six students taking that at a hundred percent proficiency. So that's where you've seen the dip there is because some of those kids are taking Algebra I. And once again, they've gone into their standards and looked deeply at those, which is why they picked some of the goals they've had. So they already revised their data, they're making curriculum adjustments and have been this summer and into the school year. And they're aligning their unit assessments to the standards. They also are being, preparing for the computer-based testing. We've talked about that a couple of times. That'll be given at grades five and eight this year. But every grade level is preparing. And the middle school has taken a very collaborative approach to this where every class is doing some form of exercise around the computer-based testing so they get used to the different tools and moving through the system. So that has been a real collaborative, not just by content areas. And grade seven had two standards in math they were concerned about. So they, they asked me, you know, can we, there's a resource called Desmos that they think is something they can integrate into what they're doing. So they've been working with Dr. Dave Wilson from Buffalo State College. And they've had two meetings with him and they revised their first unit based on two standards they wanted to focus on that they felt they could do a better job of accelerating student learning in. And so they, more to come. Right now, we're through the instructional point. We need to see what the assessment tells us about if that moves any students in those particular standards. So that's active work going on right now.
Could you say what Desmos is?
Desmos is a digital platform that, it's a resource you can use within your curriculum. So it's just another tool. So people buy programs for curriculums. This is just a resource they can integrate in. And it's highly interactive and participatory. So they're trying, the two standards that seventh grade wanted to work on, they felt that this would accelerate the student learning. So we're going to see what happens. Does that answer it?
Thank you.
Thank you, that's, yeah. Good question. Secondary social studies, global history, ninety-seven percent. In U.S. history and government, it's ninety-eight percent. And both of those assessments are relatively new over the past few years. So that, we're glad to see the achievement levels there. We can continue to, you know, push to go further. They are, what they did this summer was they used the new frameworks for the U.S. history and government and the global assessments to look at how the curriculum that they've been revising for the past few years actually ended with the results that they have. So that's what they did. They got together for five days over the summer and did a breakdown of this as well as, they have a goal to continue to increase students' ability to write in social studies content areas. And so they had four main points that they focused on this summer. And obviously, moving into the school year, it was focusing on the historical contextualization when they're writing, the document analysis and sourcing, historical reasoning and descriptive analysis and writing. So that was actually being, the social studies department really works together on this because the seventh and eighth grade courses especially will play on your global and your U.S. history. So they really work as a vertical team in the summer on this. And they usually get together for four or five days. Science committee. So science, the standards for science are a really big shift. As such, the state determined last year that they were going to revise their timeline for implementation and move their assessments out, right? Assessments really drives people to get moving even quicker on your standards. So the earth and space science and biology, the last time the current test offered the standards that we are, we have been using is going to be 2026. So in 2027, it'll be the first time biology and earth and space science will have their assessment based on a new New York State science learning standards. And then chemistry and physics will go in 2028, will be that year. So everything got pushed back a year. With that, I sat down again with science after that happened at the end of the year last year.
Lynn, sorry to interrupt. If you go back, with the years where it overlaps, where the first administration of the new exam and the last administration of the current exam, what does that mean?
So we had a choice, our depart, everybody had a choice on when they wanted to do the new exam. So we could have done the new exam during the first administration, which would have been in 2025, or we could have chosen to do it in 2026. If we chose not to do it either of those years, we could maintain the old exam. Our department, these standards are quite different and they require, what they'll do is they'll take scientific practices and concepts and put them into totally new phenomenon or novel situations. So it's, it's really a lot of teaching to transfer. And as such, we wanted the time to be able to make sure that we are addressing those standards appropriately. So our science department elected, because it was a choice you had with the state when you wanted to make the transition. So they would like, they will take the new test in 2027 and they'll remain with the old test now. And chemistry and physics are going to do the same thing. So everybody across the state had a choice. And that's what the, we had a department meeting last year and that's what they elected to do. Thank you for, it's like that knowledge here that we need to share out there. I appreciate it.
I just wanted to make sure that it was clear that the kids won't be taking two exams as the transition rolls out. But it was a smart decision because then you get to see two exams before our kids have to take it just prior to preparation.
Yeah, and there were, this, our science teachers were concerned because there aren't examples. Examples are limited, there aren't any at the high school level right now. And so that doesn't help them gauge what the tests are going to look like to make sure our kids are prepared. So I feel it was a strong decision as well. So what they're doing right now is they are continuing to work on those standards. And what they're going to do on November seventh in our next superintendent conference day is they're going to take some of these standards, the same standards, and they're going to look across, they're going to look at lessons across multiple resources to see which resources they could use instructionally that would meet the needs of the standards, but also how they want to teach our students. Our science teachers are very proficient, so they asked to do an analysis of resources. So that's, they're going to look at how different resources that they could use to support the student learning, how they handle these different standards. And that will help them make a decision as to where they might want to go with resources. So they're in the process of doing that on the seventh. And they've, they've got time with this transition. They have time to focus on that this year and then, you know, start to work on professional development with resources if they decide on specific ones. We have a good timeframe for that. And that's it. We've been very busy, but thank you. And any other questions?
Second quick question, were there any districts that did often take those science?
Some have.
What would be the reasoning for taking it sooner?
I, I'm not really sure why individuals, you know, would do that. But a lot of people were not choosing that. I could do a survey to get that exact number.
It's okay, I'm just curious.
But the reason being, there isn't, there hasn't been enough information out at the high school level right now for us to make well-informed decisions. And so if you think about science people in general, they like data, they like evidence. So they're like, "We want to see a little bit more if we make that shift." I don't know of anybody shifting into it right now, but that doesn't mean that they're not.
Yeah, and I think you've kind of illustrated what might be the advantage of taking it sooner rather than later. Not that I'm advocating for it because I think you made the right decision with the teacher's input. But if you take it, you have data to look at to see how your kids perform. So you know what sort of adjustments you might need to make to your curriculum and instruction, you know, over time. But I'm not necessarily of the mindset that I want to put our kids through that of being, you know, the first ones to take a new assessment as we're preparing for it. So I think you landed in the right spot.
Definitely, thank you.
Thank you. Last but not least, I wasn't sure, I forwarded you all an email that our teacher from Windermere and baseball coach, Brian Davis, was on Channel Two at 5:30 live with Claudine Ewing talking about our alumni, Jonah Heim, who, yeah, is playing in the American League Championship Series right now for the Texas Rangers. So he's had a great year. He was the starting catcher in the All-Star game. And in the first two games of the ALCS, he's had an RBI and a homerun. So they're up two-nothing in the series. So they're two games away from going to the World Series. And Brian, we got the call this afternoon. And of course, Brian jumped at the opportunity and went downtown and represented us very well on Channel Two. So I'm thankful to him. and proud of our alumni Jonah, and wish them well and hope they keep moving along in the playoffs. That's it.
Okay, we will need a motion for new business items.
I think a motion for new business items, E one, A through H, two, B through E, three, C, D, and G.
I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving new business items, E, one, A through H, two, B through D, and three, C, D, and G, please say aye.
Aye.
Yourself as well. All opposed? Motion carries six zero. Ms. Sodhi, are there any follow-up items?
Yeah.
We will need a motion to convene to executive session.
I'll make it.
I'll make a motion to convene to executive session, and then tell the project to approve them.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries six zero. Thank you, everyone, for coming.